First thing on the agenda is discussion and possible vote to appoint the following part-time police officers, Bradford G. Merkel and Andrew Nepal. And both are part-time police officers for a term of one year. We have a familiar face.
Yeah, we'll start off with a familiar face. Mr. Merkel here. He was a full-time with us and he left him with Sturbridge. He was willing to come back part-time and help us out as he can, which would be a big help. So we're going to put him from full-time back on part-time. And then we have Andrew Nepal here. Andrew started his law enforcement career in 2001 at Hampshire College. In '04, he moved over to Springfield Technical Community College where he's been there since 2004. He's got a bachelor's degree from Westfield State and he attended the Mass State Special State Police Academy, number 13, in '04. He's already certified with post, so he's all ready to go.
Very good. And I just want to know, do we get tires changed in our community now? Because you're a celebrity on Facebook with Sturbridge here.
You're going to get like 5,400 likes.
It was a lot. It was a lot.
Yeah, so they actually got me pushing a car out of the roadway the next day. They're like, "That's going on Facebook too." I'm like, "Come on." I'm already getting called by Purple A. But no, I'm all for changing tires.
I changed one today. No one took my picture or anything.
Because you didn't have your side?
I know.
I saw you.
See? You could have taken this picture. We went through it on Facebook.
This morning.
And we could have competed. You know, Officer Merkel, Chief.
He does Facebook.
I don't know. I don't mean that.
I'm on Facebook.
Welcome, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking on the opportunity of being a part-time police officer in the community. You know, Officer Merkel, we're obviously familiar with you from your full-time, you know, tour here. And you did an amazing job here as a full-time police officer. And you know, now you jumped over to Sturbridge and you know, you're gracing them with your presence and your auto mechanic skills. But thank you very much to both of you. And Mr. Nepal, now again, you have an impressive resume. You've had a lot of experience over the years. And thank you very much for coming to us.
Thank you all.
We're excited.
Do you guys have any, anything you want to say to us before we start? Mr. Nepal? Do you want to say anything?
I welcome the invitation and the achievement. And I'm looking forward to serving the community.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
So I actually work with Andy at Stick. So he trained me.
All right. We won't hold it against you.
He'll be changing tires no time for that. But he's a great guy and I recommend him. I don't recommend too many people these days, but he gets my recommendation for sure.
You're good.
From Stick, he'll still be part of the town. So I have the opportunity.
When are you going to have time, though?
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Because you are. Cast it out. Widen it throughout all our communities.
I'm not going to say like, yeah, when I was watching the votes being counted, I'm like, "It's not going to upset me too much, but don't care about that. Go ahead, you know, I'm going to give it my best."
You're going to do awesome over there, too. Between Sturbridge, Westbrook Field, and Warren, you know, I know you're going to give everybody your all.
Exactly.
All right. Do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
No?
No questions, just thank you. Really, thank you very much for being here.
Mr. Farrar, do you have anything?
No, I can just say that I worked with both Officer Merkel and when he first came on, all the way up to now, and we were sad to see him go. And we saw that, the first things that I saw on Facebook was him changing that tire over at Southbridge. I text you.
Yeah.
And I said, "Wow." I said, "Look at this." And congratulations on all your accomplishments. And Mr. Nepal, we welcome you to the community and we look forward to working with you and helping our police force and, you know, picking up some very important shifts as needed. Because there's going to definitely be some times when we run short in staffing and these part-time officers are going to be very vital to the department and to the residents of the town.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you, sir. All right.
Motion?
Motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Bradford G. Merkel as a part-time police officer for a one-year term.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Make a motion to appoint Andrew Nepal as a part-time police officer for a one-year term.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir. Come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good to see you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Aaron, the appointments, right up next.
Pardon me?
The appointments, sir.
I've got them right here. All I have to do is have them sign them.
Okay.
I don't think Lori's here still.
So if they come early next week to go in front of the car, it'll be okay?
Yes.
Let's sign them right now. Get it over with.
Lori's here. Oh, is she?
Is Lori still here?
Yep.
Oh, then you can just go do it.
Run right over.
Yeah, I'll bring you guys down there real quick. Come on, come down.
Just have that.
Yeah, no, I look forward to working with all you on the other round as well, so.
Absolutely. Again, we were very excited to see it.
Yourself just came up.
Hi.
Myself?
All y'all.
All y'all.
Would you like a second to? I can swear them in. I have the paperwork.
Working on it.
Yeah, they're going to come down and do it. I'll have to text them in. It'll take like a minute, so. Can you give me their names so I can type them in? Share the one off, yeah, or do one?
Yep.
Do we need anything?
I can grab the Facebook picture.
Oh, yeah, 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 Facebook picture.
Yeah, I'll grab your.
Want me to make a copy?
Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible vote to allocate $11,033.50 from American Rescue Plan Act funds to offset the additional costs of the school street improvement project. Okay? Mr. Farrar, you have a background on this?
Yep. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As we had discussed, the school street and Prospect Street Improvement Project, there's a possibility of us being short about $22,000, a little over $22,000, $22,067. Now, as the project continues to play out, it's our goal and our hope that we would be able to have some cost savings on some of the work that is being provided. And so, but it's important to have these funds allocated and reserved in case, in case they're needed to finish and complete the project. And so, as discussed with our planning partners, CMRPC, and then as discussed with our contractors, we've reserved, we're asking the board to consider reserving these funds, one from ARPA. And the next item on the agenda, you'll see, is going to be coming from CDBG funds, miscellaneous funds. And in your packets, you will have a breakdown of where we are currently with ARPA and also with miscellaneous funds for CDBG. If this was to be approved this evening, this would give us an unallocated balance of ARPA funds of approximately $80,871.22 that are still, you know, would be unallocated if this was, if this amount was to be reserved tonight. The miscellaneous funds for the next item would leave us approximately a little bit, half of those funds still, still being available for other projects that we may want to do in the future.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I do not.
You have any questions, sir?
Nope.
Okay. Motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to support the FY21 Warren CDBG Grant School Street Improvement Construction Project for a total of $22,067, using $11,033.50 from American Rescue Plan Act as needed.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And the caveat is going to be, you know, if the funds are not used in its entirety, they will go back to the, you know, ARPA funds. And then they'll be reallocated for, you know, whatever the board wants in the future.
Okay, thank you. Okay, third item, discussion and possible vote to allocate $11,033.50 for the community, from Community Development Block Grant, miscellaneous funds to offset the additional costs of the school street improvement project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I previously stated in your packets, you'll have the supporting documentation of what is exactly available for the funds. You'll have, there's miscellaneous funds and then there's also recapture funds. Recapture funds have already been reserved for this project. This would also be, just be tapping into the miscellaneous account for about half of the figures there.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
I do not.
Do you, sir?
No questions.
Okay, motion?
Motion to support the FY21 Warren CDBG Grant School Street Improvement Project for a total of $22,067, using $11,033.50 from CDBG recaptured funds as needed.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Updates on economic development, administration request for proposal process?
So I just wanted to briefly update the board as we indicated at our, at our last meeting. We are now in the process, and I'm going to be meeting with Tammy Martin tomorrow with regards to, you know, possibly just going back out to bid all in its entirety for the project. It is critically important that we, you know, that we get moving to try to get some, some type of written solicitations. It was my hope that I would get some solicitations written. We've reached out to a couple companies. Some companies have, have expressed that they're just, you know, too busy. Other companies have expressed that, you know, that they, you know, they just don't have the time to meet these constraints. So I think it's in the best interest of town to just resubmit to an RFP at this, at this juncture. You know, there has been some level of expression from Weston and Sampson. Hopefully that they'll, you know, submit a, an RFP, I mean, a proposal. And that, you know, something can be worked on in terms of, in terms of trying to contract with one of these entities.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Do you have any questions?
Now, fingers crossed.
Yeah? You good, sir?
Yes.
Need to get somebody. All right. Continued discussion and possible vote to authorize the town administrator to issue a request for proposal to conduct a feasibility study for the proposed purpose of constructing a new public safety municipal complex.
So as, Mr. Chairman, as we had met last week and discussed about an RFP for the feasibility study of building a new public safety municipal complex, we've made some revisions to the, to the RFP. Some things that I want to, again, meet with our chief procurement officer tomorrow on, Tammy Martin, on with regards to, I want to also incorporate in here some programming with the caveat of whoever the licensed professional that's going to be providing the service, that they, that they look up to three potential sites, so, within town. Whether it be town-owned land, whether it be privately-owned land, but they have to have a minimum of three sites that they, that potentially that they could look at. And up to, with site selection and site evaluation, and also with a Phase One study of environmental, which is, which is critically important for any site, Phase One for environmental. All of these will, will be put together in the feasibility study, will then ultimately result in a cost. So you'll then have an understanding of how much a cost would be to build some type of structure like this. And this is what the grant has allowed us to do in terms of, you know, to identify what is the potential cost of this and the impact on the town residents for, for having, you know, the construction of this particular process, the project. You know, I would also want to signal to the board that the grant is $40,000, okay? This particular project, you know, because prices have risen in the last, you know, year or so, could be somewhere around the neighborhood of anywhere between 50,000 to 80,000, okay? So the board may want to consider the use of some of the remaining ARPA funds to offset some of the potential costs of what this feasibility study may cost. Also in the study, I would like to have some, you know, you know, some, you know, some type of conceptual design so that the residents and the townspeople can kind of see what conceptually something like this would, would be and how it would be laid out. Again, all of this would play into, you know, what the cost would be, you know? If you have some concepts, if you have some, some programming. Programming means that the firm, whoever's selected, would come to town, would do an evaluation at the police station, would do an evaluation at the firehouse, fire station, would do an evaluation of this building and to see how much square footage we actually need and put it all together into a feasibility study, would then come forward with a price and then you could start your planning phases from that, from that area forward.
Okay. One of the things that, again, I just thought of it, because sometimes when we stop brainstorming about these things and you talk about an environmental study, one of the things that were brought up in a previous grant process for building construction, in order to obtain certain grants, we need to have an archaeological study done. Because if we choose a site and that site happens to have an Indian burial ground on it or was used in some significant way throughout history, that is going to stop the project because we're not going to be able to move forward at that point. So I don't know if that's something we want to have a historical assessment added in there to look at the land and say, "Okay, was this land used in any type of historical means?" Because we do have some land within the community that has burial sites on it and, you know, I know there's areas where a significant amount of like cultural stuff, indigenous people cultural stuff was found. So we just want to make sure we don't get into a piece of property and say, "Okay, we want this piece of property. It's great. It's good." And you find out, well, that's where the Nipmucks used to hang out all the time and for 100 years, that's where they, they did business. And that shuts us down on that site.
Sure. So with site selection, obviously, the more site selection there is in the feasibility study, it drives up the cost. Because part of site selection will be to look at, you know, the potential aspects of what the chairman just had described. A site selection, site evaluation. So I think a reasonable amount of site selection for a town our size would be three. I don't think you need to go any higher.
Well, no, definitely. Three's good. Yeah. I just didn't know if we wanted to make sure that we add something in there as part of your site selection, you put that into consideration.
Sure.
So when you're choosing your three, two of them aren't historical sites.
Right.
Because obviously, we're not going to be able to do anything there.
Well, that would certainly drive up the cost because then you got to remove the, you know, if you can, even if you can, remove some of the historical aspects of it, it may not even be.
Well, yeah, we couldn't even financially do it because.
Couldn't be financially possible.
No, because you, first of all, you'd have to, that'd trigger an archaeological study. And, you know, until that's completed, and at that point, we don't know if, like, the Nipmucks or whoever would decide, "Hey, that site is significant to us and we don't want you building a building there." So.
So with this RFP, because we're moving right along with it, I think that, you know, it could be reasonably sent out, you know, with the caveat of adding in programming, site selection, if the board is okay with, you know, looking at three sites, site evaluation, Phase One environmental study, and conceptual design. If you're okay with adding that in, I think that this could potentially be, you know, sent out, you know, within the next week.
Okay.
May I, a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
So basically, what we need is, the first part of the study, they're going to take all our buildings, they're going to take all our infrastructure, meaning functions, and say, "Well, this is X amount of secretaries, X amount of executives, you know, all of these departments that we have today." They're going to do projections for 15, 25 years for growth. Could grow, it could shrink. They'll, they'll have to tell us that. From that, we get an area. From that, we get, well, for this building this size, we need a site this size. So it is very important that the study tell us what to do and not just give you here your three sites.
No, no.
Right?
Yeah, so they will, they will, they will come back and say, "Hey, look, you need a site that can be," you know, exactly what Derek said, you know, you know, five acres, three acres, you know, two acres. And they will work with the town on this. And they will work with, you know, trying to help identify sites for the town. And then the, the way in which it was, you know, described to me in, in some other communities, what could slow down the processes is that if, you know, for some reason, you know, you know, a, you know, one of the sites is, you know, of a hot-button issue in town and is not an agreeable site, it could slow down the feasibility study in terms of, you know, you know, whether or not this site should be considered or not. Because ultimately, the site consideration would be up to the board.
Okay. Now, with this, this is, you're separating a municipal building and a public safety complex.
So it, the.
Because it can't be both together.
The way at which, the way in which it was, the grant was written was for both.
Yeah, but we could separate the buildings.
You could separate it, sure, sure.
Because you don't want, you don't want to keep a municipal building but a public safety building because, again, with public safety, you're dealing with people that have committed some crimes and you may be locking them up and securing them. And for any chance if any of them were to get out of holding or whatever, they would have access to the entire building if they had that ability to get into with secretaries and administrative personnel. And most public safety buildings are separate from a municipal building for that security issue. You can keep them on the same grounds.
Yeah.
But you keep them separate. And even, even with fire and police, you have them in one building, but they're still divided. Firefighters can't get into the police side and vice versa, except for some shared services like, you know, community room or, you know, say, a training room or something like that or a gym. But they can't get into each side, not into the business parts, so.
So that would be discussed during the programming phase of whoever is selected, you know, as, you know, somebody is selected, you know, whether it be a, an architect, a registered design professional, an engineer, you know, they would sit down with the town and they would, you know, discuss the needs of, of the police chief, the needs of the fire chief, the needs of, you know, municipal office space. And then they would try to work the design based on the recommendations that they were given. So that would be obviously taken into consideration.
Okay. Cool. Do you have any questions?
No, looks good.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, we're doing, we're going in the white hat.
We're moving forward.
But I would also, you know, again, if we can, I'm not asking for a specific amount at this time because I don't know until these things come back, but to slow down on any use of ARPA funds just for this, this time period. In anticipation, we may need, you know, 30,000 or 40,000 left from there to complete the study.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Conrad, you had a question?
Joe Conrad, resident. Monday, I'll bring to Jim research that I've done in the past on the Native Americans and some possible archaeological sites in town.
Sites to avoid.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay.
So we're okay with Jim adding what he wanted to add and then going ahead? Just before I do a motion.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
I'm good with it.
So we don't need to see it again, right?
It's up to you guys. Do you prefer to see it again before we vote on it? You know, we know what the elements are. We know what's being placed into it. The wording is going to be legalese to us. So as long as legal says yes and Mr. Farrar has worked on it, I'm good with the position. My concern is actually getting the RFP moving forward so we can start developing this project. Again, you're being very specific with it and you're looking at the details and I feel comfortable with that, but if you don't feel comfortable, we can always.
No, that's fine.
Bring it back and have another, another vote. We don't have a meeting next week, so.
No, that's good.
Other than an executive session, so we'd have to carry over to the next week.
I'm just going to add to this motion then, like, as discussed or something. Because I just want to make sure I don't make a motion and then lock us into what's here.
Right, 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 right.
If you're going to change it, so. And as long as we're good with him changing.
What was discussed for the changes.
Correct. So programming, three-site selection, site evaluations, you know, environmental, conceptual design, those things would be added into the scope.
Okay.
Are you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to issue a request for proposal as discussed to conduct a feasibility study for the purpose of constructing a new public safety municipal complex.
Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And so, before everybody gets nervous about this, this is a research on how to do this and to give us the information on what it would cost and all that stuff. So we are better educated in the future for doing such a project if the town sees that's in our best interest.
And there's going to be, you know, as part of programming, too, there's going to be, you know, opportunities for whoever is selected in this process to come and to make presentations to the residents, to the selectmen, to the department heads, you know, it'll be an all-encompassing, you know, proposal. So it will flow with all of the information to the people and to the residents and to see, and they can see exactly, well, how much is it going to cost? I mean, everybody can say, "Well, you know, it's going to be 25 million, 30 million, 10 million." You don't know until you have all of the elements together on paper and this will, will help us, get us there. And it doesn't cost the residents anything because of the grant that we got and if we use a little bit of ARPA money, it will complete the project in its entirety. we use a little bit of ARPA money, it will complete the project in its entirety.
We, we have to understand that this is such a long process that we are not gonna be here as the process keeps going. So he needs all the tools and, you know, to get it going, otherwise it will just disappear.
Yeah.
All right. Guys, good, move on?
Yes.
All right. So, the next thing on the agenda is continued discussion and possible vote on the final draft for employee performance evaluations and implementation timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As discussed at the last meeting, uh, there was, been some minor changes to the draft that you had seen, uh, a few months ago, um, you know, I took into consideration, um, you know, a section where whether or not an individual would participate in, in, in town trainings, um, you know, such as, you know, cyber trainings, any type of trainings that, that the town would, you know, request its employees to participate in. You will see that there's kind of a, a rating scale, um, that has been developed, and I wanted to, um, to go over that. Karen was very, very, very nice and kind enough to put this together in the colorful, uh, color-coded, uh, format, so thank you, Karen, for doing that. So, it's, um, you, you'll see how, how the numbers, there's the, um, the, the positions here go up to, if you're not a supervisor, you could gain up to a hundred and eighty-five points, okay? So if you've got all fives and all of the, all of the selections, you can gain up to a hundred and eighty-five points. You know, that's a, that's a perfect score, and then, so it's, it's scaled, it's a scaled approach, so if you, if you have, if you got a four, if you got a three, if you got a two, or if you got a one, um, it's all based on a scale, and so, you know, if you're in the green category, that's outstanding. If you're in the, uh, yellow category, you're still successful and exceeds expectations. In the red category, it's unsatisfactory, uh, improvement is expected. So it's, uh, red, yellow, green, just like stop, caution, and go. And the scale for the supervisors, they have a little bit more responsibility, um, they're expected to perform a little bit higher, um, you know, to higher standards, uh, so their rating's scaled because they have an additional box, you can get up to two hundred and fifteen points, uh, if you got all fives, and then you would, you know, scale, scale back down from there. This allows for people to set goals for themselves, which I think is critically important. Uh, when you do evaluations on a yearly basis, you should set some goals, uh, whether they're professional goals or, or personal goals, um, and, and write them down and, and, and reduce them to paper, um, so that you can see over ye, over the year, um, whether or not they were achievable or, or not, or something that needs continual improvement. You will also see, um, in here, uh, that it goes through, um, very general areas of, you know, job-related experience, customer service skills, um, quality of work and productivity, uh, initiative, taking initiative, being create, uh, creative, problem-solving, um, cooperation, teamwork, leadership, um, dependability, attendance, and then if you supervise staff or, or, or you develop staff. So it will have, you know, those categories as well. Again, this is a, a very, um, kind of a detailed approach, because as of right now, we really don't have anything. The town didn't have, uh, an evaluation criteria, uh, set criteria. Some departments may, might have, uh, you know, have done them, um, on their own, some may not have, um, but this is, would be a, a universal one, uh, that would kind of be able to, uh, cover universal, um, is, the universe of, of the employees that, that are here. This would not pertain to police because of their contractual obligations.
So why would it pertain to police?
Well, that would have to be negotiated through, um, for the patrolman, they would have to be negotiated in the, in their union contract.
So how are they currently being evaluated?
Uh, once a year. Is that what you're talking about?
This is the same, same thing, why wouldn't this evaluation?
I could use this probably.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I would imagine that, you know, it would have.
Because all we're doing is standardizing the evaluation process for everybody.
Yeah, as long as I keep my same process, I think it'd be all right.
Right.
Usually, usually what would happen is that, you know, this would have to be approved by the union. This is not, this is not.
No, you inform them that this is the process we're going to, and if they have any objections to it, give them a time to review it, look at it, make comments if they have any comments, but management can implement the process because it's not a change in work conditions, it's just an eval, supervisor evaluation process. It gives you a tool that's standardized. You're not doing a change in work conditions, so it's not negotiable.
I, I, I would, I would think that, you know, it would have to be.
You should, you should make them aware of it and let them know, this is the standard process we're doing for all town employees.
So, I think if we roll this out to all non-union employees first, and then they can work with the piece on the, to see if the union would, you know, be okay with this, then, then we can, you know, move forward.
Well, it's not whether we see it, they're, they're okay with it, we tell them we're implementing this now, because, again, it's not a change in work conditions. We're standardizing a format of evaluation, as long as we make them aware of it, they have a time to review it, comments, concerns, why it's being done, explain it to them, you're not changing.
I'd have to still keep it at the once that I do a year.
Yes.
If we change that, then it would be definitely.
Well, we're still doing it once a year. The, it's an annual appraisal, so it's a one-year appraisal, it's just standardized, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We give them time to grieve it.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, they, they have their process, but. I was a union steward for a long time, and I know that the only time you can really grieve things is, is change in work conditions, because we tried grieving our new performance evaluations, and no go.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, 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 I don't know if they would be successful, but I, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, that there could be, you know, some objection there, and that's, you know.
Well, you're always, yeah. You know, that's why you give them an opportunity, you notify and make notifications saying, hey, valuation process is starting, changing, as of this date, the new process will be enacted, you know, and give them ample time to review it. You know, unless they have something major, you know, that they could relate to, that it violates collective bargaining in any way, which I don't see it doing, so.
Yeah.
Good. So, yeah, I, I'm good with.
It looks good.
Okay, we could, we can implement it starting in June, if the board is okay with that, and that would follow the, the, that would follow the personal bylaw.
Okay. So, speaking of annual review, I wanna make sure that this does not hold us to an annual review, because we wanna have an annual review, but we also talked about, like, doing, uh, like, a biannual, right, like, a six-month. So we can use this for that review too, if.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this is just to get us going, I mean, you know.
Yeah, no, yeah.
We, 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 we haven't had anything.
Right.
So this will, this, this is a step in the right direction.
Yeah. So, on page two, I think I pointed it out before, um, the third set of boxes, there's no achieved.
Achieved, oh, okay, yeah, I will put that out.
It's missing that.
Yeah, I think, okay, I'll put that in there.
And then, what's the other thing? Oh, so where is the thing about training? I know I've harped on this before, I really think people need to do, and there's, a northeast side.
It's under, um, quality of work and productivity, the last box participates in town trainings.
Okay, all right. I just, I really think that's important.
Oh, it's critical, yeah.
Because there's a, we got.
We get a report.
I assume we all got an email, because I got one.
I just recently got one, yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna take it. It's on my list.
Come on, you guys.
I know.
I'm taking everyone's. I'm taking the certificates in your folder.
You know, the people that have the worst plumbing in the house are plumbers, okay? So, we, we'll get it done.
Friday's a good day to do that, I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay, I expect a certificate from your boss.
Did you get yours done? No comment? These guys could teach that course. We'll get it done. Okay.
All right, so other than that, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good. One thing I have is. Okay, we have the tool here, all right.
Okay. So, on the rating scale at the end, how are these, what are these numbers? Is this like all the possible scores that one could get? So a one-eighty-five would be all fives.
Would be all fives.
A one-seventy-eight would be all, um, all, one-four and all fives, is that how?
Well, no, I mean, it could, it would be within that, you know, it, it, it's not gonna get to, down to the minute detail, right? So it's gonna be, you know, if you're, if you're in the green box, you're, you're golden, right? You know, I mean, that, it, you know, there's only, I guess there's levels of green that you could, you know, you could be a high green, you could be a medium green, you could be a low green, but, you know, it's, if, if you're green, it's outstanding.
Okay, and just.
So you just estimate where you are?
Green is my favorite, cool.
So, enough the outstanding, it's one-twenty-six to one-eighty-five, but those numbers on the bottom, it starts with one-twenty-five.
Sorry, I'll fix that.
I wasn't sure why it said one-twenty-five, one-thirty-one, one-thirty-eight, one-forty-three, you know what I mean?
I just divided it up with the, the ten lines.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, but you just fix the number in on that, so it matches up.
Yeah, we can just.
So.
Yep.
Goes from one-twenty-five to one-eighty-five.
Mm-hmm.
You can also detect it.
Well, I, I would maybe just suggest getting rid of those numbers at the bottom, just 'cause it, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, we could, we could get rid of just the whole numbers and just.
Then just do.
Maybe under the category, you put their score, so say it was a successful person and they got a one-twenty, they can go on that first blank line.
Yeah, just put a.
Do you know how long I worked on that?
That's a good idea.
No, I think, I think that would be good too, because you, it's a little confusing with the scaling of the numbers.
Yeah, I agree.
If you just put, you know, total score.
Okay, so I put, what I'll do is I'll put the one-twenty-five to one-sixty-five, and then underneath it, I'll take all that out, and then I'll just put total score, and you can write the.
Yeah, put the score underneath.
Yeah.
The range, I think would be the better.
Okay, got it.
That's good.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay.
And then we can start, um, doing these, you know, June, in the month of June.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I'm good. So make those changes and say we're all set.
Motion?
Yeah, and to start in June, right?
Yep.
All right. Sir? All right, motion to approve the employee performance evaluation and implementation timeframe.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Gueris, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good work, Mr. Farrar.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion and possible vote to authorize the town administrator to enter into a temporary cleaning service agreement with Buffoon Cleaning Services for the purpose of cleaning town buildings. Okay, Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr.
Give us a background.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you, this evening, uh, is a proposal for, for temporary cleaning services. Our, our, our current custodian, full-time custodian, is on leave, um, and this would be for temporary services that, um, you know, to get our, our buildings clean, um, in his absence. And this proposal, um, is brought to you by Buffon, Buffon Cleaning Services, uh, they're out of Charleton. I, uh, you know, the gentleman, Steve Buffoni, uh, came to town, he, um, assessed, uh, the Shepherd Building, the police, uh, operations, the fire department, the DPW, uh, and the senior center, and he's taken into consideration the amount of square footage, you know, that is there, uh, he's taken into consideration what we've asked him, uh, you know, to perform, which is empty the trash, clean all the bathrooms, restock the, uh, the bathrooms with our supplies, our supplies, uh, clean the toilets, the sinks, the mirrors, the floors, sweep, vacuum all floors, carpets, stairwells, uh, mop the hard, uh, the hard floors once a week, in each of the buildings, uh, wipe down, disinfect, uh, conference tables, desks, uh, spot clean windows and glass doors, um, and this would be done twice a week, uh, at each of these, um, locations. He has availability to start this, um, pretty much effective immediately, next week, um, and for the pricing, um, for, for services, this is only twice a week, um, he was, uh, he quoted the town at four hundred dollars a week.
So he's doing all those buildings twice a week and all that cleaning for only four hundred dollars a week?
That is what he quoted the town. And he, he is, um.
Sign it.
Sign it.
He's licensed, insured, um, he does some, some work in the Brookfields area, um, and, you know, we would be able to work out, uh, for, for example, on the Shepherd Building, you know, one of his days would be Fridays, because, you know, there's, there's no staff here, so he can pretty go, move pretty quickly through, except for myself and Karen, um, but there's really no other staff here, um, on Friday, so he can whiz through, it's, it's close to the public, there's not public, there's not, not a lot of people around, um, so he could get that done, and then another day he was thinking about was on, um, either Tuesday or Wednesday, um, you know, to, to give it a little bit of a, of a balance there, uh, to do the, to do the other day. And he was a very, um, you know, he understood that this would, you know, depending on, you know, temporary is, is an undetermined time right now, um, so, um, he was okay with that, I explained the situation, um, and, um, he's, you know, he's, uh, agreeable to having it, you know, be very temporary.
So we don't have any commitment?
No, no, we, we could end the contract at, you know, at, at pretty much any time, and.
This could be something, so, again, we get back up to manpower and stuff again, this could be something where somebody needs to take time off, take a week vacation, he can fill in.
Well, um, we, we don't have a, um, we wouldn't have a, a, a line for this, and that, that brings me to the next, you know, topic of the discussion here, is, is that, how are we gonna pay for this? So, um, currently, there's, there's no, there's no money, you know, allocated for this, so, uh, it, it, you know, I, I, I reached out to the FinCom, and I've asked the FinCom, they have a couple of line item transfer requests from some, from some departments that they're going to be reviewing on Tuesday before our meeting, um, and I would, I'm hopeful that we could, you know, identify between now and then, um, I'm going through the budget, some, some surpluses in some areas and where we could put some money, some additional money into the expense account at the Shepherd Building to pay for this, um, so.
If we can't do that, and I know we talked about conserving ARPA money, but we're looking at, even if it's for a month, you know, you're looking at.
Sixteen hundred bucks.
Sixteen hundred bucks for a month. Okay, I think that's, it could be doable out of ARPA if we need to.
Sure, sure.
If we can't find any other resource, because we need to have the buildings cleaned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And, you know, it. And, you know, it needs to get done. We'll find the money.
Mm-hmm.
If we can't find it through FinCom, sixteen hundred bucks or, say, two thousand dollars if you're five weeks from now. And we use two thousand dollars out of ARPA, it's not breaking the bank.
Yeah, okay.
We still have all that other money there, and we're not being frivolous with the money. We're not saying, oh, Jim, go out and buy.
No, we need, we need cleaning, yeah.
Go, go, go buy a new ambulance or something, you know? Um, it's not a lot. Okay. Although, I would like another ambulance. Alright.
So, I mean, if.
It feels great.
I mean, if the, if the caveat is, you know, that I could have a little flexibility, whether it's a line item transfer for ARPA uh, for, you know, you know, I don't know, a month or two-month period, you know, I, you know, that would be nice and helpful.
You know, again, it would be nice to see his work too, so he comes in here, he does his work. If he does great work, then we'll continue with him as, as needed, and then, if not.
Right.
We terminate the contract, so.
Did you talk to other towns that had used him?
I don't think he's done any other towns. He's done some commercial work.
Oh, when you mentioned other towns, it was commercial work.
Yeah, commercial work, yeah.
Okay.
Again, for four hundred bucks to clean all the buildings. You know? And if he's doing great work, it's no-brainer. Um, and if we don't like his work, we'll terminate the contract.
Doesn't, there's no, there's no, it doesn't lock us into anything.
It's more like just the price, right?
Right.
What he's gonna do and the price, and that's it, so. Alright.
So, I'm good with it. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. See, how are you doing?
You have anything else?
Um, I expressed to you that the sewer department would be the only thing. I mean.
I, I spoke to Ralph, I spoke to Ralph about it, and he said that he's okay with, you know, doing it himself, you know, and getting, you know, it's, it's a very small area.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, because if we did them, we'd have to bill them and get money back.
It would be part of a, you know, because they're, you know, they're a enterprise fund.
Yeah, but based on the four hundred a week for the, all these buildings, I can't imagine the incremental cost to do a small thing in the sewer would be much more, but.
No, but again, we'd have to.
Yeah.
There's a lot more to it. I'm good.
Yeah, I think it's great. Um, I hope this works out, cause the price is awesome. Looks really good.
Do a motion?
Alright, I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to enter into a temporary cleaning service agreement with Buffoon Cleaning Services for the purpose of cleaning town buildings.
Second.
Well, in the ability to use.
Either a line item transfer or ARPA.
An ability to use a line item transfer or ARPA to fund the, uh, services.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Gredes, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
You're all set, sir. Get him here Monday.
Alright. I'm gonna call him tomorrow.
Alright. Okay, announcement. So, the special town and annual town meetings will be held, um, this coming Tuesday, May ninth, starting at six-thirty for the special town meeting, and at seven o'clock for the annual town meeting at the Quabog Regional Middle High School auditorium. There will be childcare services provided also, so you don't have to worry if you, um, have children and you wanna bring them, uh, there will be services there for, um, somebody to watch them while you participate in the meeting. So, please attend. We would love to see every single resident in town attend the meeting and have their say on what's going on. The more, the merrier. It's not just us that decide what goes on in the town, it's the whole town that decide. So, please show up for the town meetings.
It's your taxes.
It's your taxes, exactly. If you have three people decide where, whether the taxes go up or go down, that's sad. You know? So, get them both. Okay. So. Is that thing on here for humming words?
No.
And then we have a request of the US Army Corps of Engineers to perform the annual inspection of the levee on Monday, May fifteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, a request to be rescheduled to a date sometime in the fall.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, I had received, Rich had sent, uh.
Yeah.
A, uh, an email, uh, with regards to this, and I reached out to, um, the representatives and the managers over at the US Army Corps of Engineers. Um, they, uh, are tentatively scheduled to come out here for Monday, the fifteenth. And I remember last year, it was, uh, very new on the scene, uh, that I know the board went out there on, on, on that. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if Monday would work for the board, uh, but, uh, if it doesn't, um, he had, he did indicate that he could reschedule to a date later in the fall, um, if the board, you know, so, so choose to desire. Um, they have very limited availabilities, um, so that's why we put off until the fall. Um, I did speak with Jimmy McKeon, and he has gotten now those, um, those trailers.
Mm-hmm.
I picked them up. He's got some sandbags, he's got tools. You know, one of the things on the report from last year, as I remember, um, what, you know, was having some, you know, being prepared on some of this, showing them that, you know, that we've made somewhat of some progress on, on some of the issues here. Uh, again, a lot of this stuff needs to be, um, is a long-term plan, uh, for, to address a lot of these, uh, concerns, um, but it just shows that the town is, is interested in, in, and is trying to, to be responsible and picking away at some of the, uh, issues there. So, uh.
I, I, I would, before we get too involved in it, I would actually recommend reschedule to the fall.
Okay.
Because then this way, it would give us time to set up the trailer, get everything in there, get, get everything all set, um, fix some of the deficiencies that we can on there, and, you know, identify, you know, the mill complex and stuff, and get everybody in there. Cause again, highway should be there, you know, we were there last time, um, and all the main players into this, so we could see what, what's going on, and we could walk through with it and, um, do it then and there. So, I'd suggest the fall. You know, feel good with that?
Yeah, because I feel unless, you know, Jim has got that stuff in the trailer or the storage bin all set up, then it won't count.
Yeah.
So, we're basically just gonna repeat what we did last year, so I would rather have us have some progress. And maybe now we can like, you know, hunker down and figure out what else we can get done before the fall. Cause I, you know, if they come back and we haven't done anything, it doesn't look very good.
Cause we still have to, we still have to set up a plan on exercising the valves. We have to have the valves inspected, all, all the piping going in there inspected. Um, you know, there's still more to do. The trailers and getting the equipment was kind of the low-hanging fruit for us, the easy thing to get done. And, you know, I, I agree with, you know, Rich. We should have at least the whole low-hanging fruit ready, and like, so when they look at it, you got so many sandbags, and we wanna make sure we have enough sandbags per the requirement, because they gave us a standard of how many sandbags we need to have. Let's make sure we have all the sandbags, we have the tools, we have the trailer dedicated and marked for that purpose, levee, you know, for the levee. You know, at least we can shine it up a little bit that way.
Yeah.
You know, and we need a little more time for that, because we're still acquiring these things. And maybe at that point, we could be ready to get an inspection done on, on the piping too, into the levee, because we do have to figure out how we're gonna fund that. And, you know, if it falls after a special town meeting, after a special in the fall, maybe we could allocate some money to having a company come out and, you know, check, check the pipes and stuff with a camera and document that for us. And maybe, I know everybody was really worried about turning any valves, because if you open it, it might not close. And, um, if we have a company do that, maybe they'd be ready to fix it too.
Yeah, they know what they're doing.
They know what they're doing, versus us, if we go out there and we're exercising valves, and we open the thing up, and the thing doesn't close back up, you know, hopefully they can resolve that.
Good thing.
Good thing.
So, yeah, let's reschedule to the fall.
And, and even if we're not exercising the valves, but between now and the fall, if we come up with a plan, like who's gonna do it?
Right.
When they're gonna do it, how often, and some of these other things, if we start coming up with these plans, that'll show progress.
And that's the thing, we gotta identify whose responsibility is this, to do this? Is this gonna fall under our highway department? Or do we have to hire a new employee, just go out there? Or is it a service that we're gonna have to contract? Maybe we have to contract a service that's gonna come out here quarterly, exercise the valves, and nope, any flaws or whatever. You know, we gotta figure out who's gonna do that.
It's not a bad idea, because again, having people who know how to do this thing, and know what to look for, instead of just having a town employee do it, who's just like, oh, okay, I'll open the valve, I'll close the valve, you know?
You know, contracting it, but then we gotta set up a contract for it, then we have to have a fund, to fund that contract. We gotta get money approved to do it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need more time.
Okay, I'll, uh, call the gentleman back and ask him to reschedule to the fall.
Okay, thank you.
If you could send the pictures, that'd be a good day.
And right after Mother's Day too, come on.
Oh, yeah.
I have a bunch of pictures from the levee that's in, those for a while.
Yeah.
And there may be new owners.
Yeah, we don't know who the owners of the rights complex are gonna be, so.
Yeah.
And then we still have to clarify, the other thing, well, the, the other thing that we should probably tackle, which is gonna, fairly easy, is a, um, an easement. Cause we need to get the easement agreement with the other owners, the other property owners, and figure out if there's already an easement there, or if we have to establish a new easement, because we need to have access to that. That's one of the things we get gigged on in the, in inspection, is they couldn't clarify the easement.
Maybe that's something we can have town council work on.
Yeah. That would be another thing that, you know, we could probably easily do.
That area that used to be grass that got paved, we, we haven't done anything about that, right?
No, that, that's supposed, again, that's another thing, because we gotta have that restored.
We need a lawyer letter on that, probably.
Yeah, because, you know, when they did that, so they can make their radius and their turn, and they, they didn't come to the town for permission for that, and that kind of fell back into the easement part too. Do we have an easement saying that you can't do that? Because they basically altered the levee by taking away that embankment.
Yeah.
So.
That's, there's, so there's a couple of things like that, that they're not gonna be happy about, so.
Yeah.
I don't, can you ask town council to come up with a letter?
Sure.
We know, we know how that happened and how to fix it, so we should take care of it. The other things like, you know, adding that sluice, the gate and all that stuff, I mean, that happened a decade, three decades ago.
Nothing we could do about the bridge.
I don't know.
The bridge is there.
Yeah, the bridge. So, there's, again, it's what, what can we deal with now, right?
Yeah.
I think, um, Jeremy was working on the bridge information, and I think he was trying to get DOT and them together on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's a good thing.
Yeah. We're not ready.
Okay.
But I think we can make some progress by the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. You good with that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright. So, minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May sixth and May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
David Gredes, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we, uh, are preparing, obviously, uh, for, uh, annual town meeting that's coming up on, on Tuesday. Um, we have, um, as I mentioned before, uh, FinCom has, um, anticipating a, a couple requests for some line item transfers, um, to get, to get addressed. They're gonna be, uh, meeting, um, on Tuesday before our meeting, uh, to address some of them. They're not gonna be, they're not gonna be around too much, uh, for the rest of the summer. They will come back one, one other time, um, and that's why they wanted to try to address these matters at the special. Um, and, um, so, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get a lot of these things cleared up, and there won't be much, if any, uh, to do in, in July. Um, and then, we, we've also, uh, have gotten all of the, um, the books are out there, everything's out on, online for the warrant articles, uh, for people to review, um, if they have any questions, um, you know, to, uh, to bring them forward at, at, at town meeting. I've coordinated with Jeff Blake. Jeff will be there. Uh, he's coming, um, right for six, probably earlier than that, um, you know, for, um, anticipation of our meeting with FinCom. Um, I was informed, uh, by the clerk that there has been a moderator selected, um, and that we have a moderator in place for the meeting, uh, which is a good thing. Um, uh, I have reached out, um, Jeff, I spoke to Jeff this, this morning, um, and Jeff was concerned about whether or not we had a moderator, and I told him, once I heard from the clerk. Um, he had suggested reaching out to the new moderator, uh, to, uh, get this person up to date with all of the warrant articles and all of the stuff, um, that will be presented at town meeting. Um, and he had recommended possibly doing a Zoom call about this on, on Monday. And I said, well, let me, uh, talk to the selectmen to see if maybe one of the selectmen would also like to join the Zoom call as well, um, for, um, getting the moderator up to speed with, you know, I believe this person has never been a moderator before, but is familiar with town government. Um, so I think to have a seamless, uh, meeting, I think it would be important for, um, the, the, the town to have a moderator that's up to date on, on all of the articles, um, and any potential questions that may arise. Uh, one thing that I, I'm sure that will, uh, come up that is new this year, um, is, you know, how the school budget is not part of the omnibus budget. It's, it's its own article this year. Um, and, um, you know, how do we, how, how does the moderator treat that? You know, past practices has been that, you know, as the article is written, you can only, you know, make a motion to decrease it. You can't increase it, uh, to make sure that, um, you know, that past practice, um, and, you know, um, understanding.
That's probably something that's gonna come up, because again, on Facebook, people are asking how to increase it. It can't happen.
Right.
Because it's an article.
Right.
You can decrease this one, but you can't increase it.
Right. So, in, in preparation for that, I think that, you know, it's important to make sure and educate the, the new moderator that, you know, of this. So, um, you know, that will be happening on Monday at two, if any of the.
The other thing maybe is invite Vinnie.
Invite Vinnie, okay, sure, sure.
I mean, he's been moderator for.
Yeah.
A bunch of years here and in other places, so.
Okay.
I wouldn't be able to make Monday. I'm working. Can you make Monday, or?
Uh, I think I can. It depends what time it is.
Two o'clock.
Yeah.
I think two-thirty.
Let me see if I can move my meeting.
Okay. So, if it's just one, then we don't, obviously, we don't have to post it.
Yeah. I don't think we need everybody there.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm sure I can change my meeting, so.
Okay.
I can't change the kind that your kids come out at school, so you're good to go.
And that's basically what we've been working on, um, from, you know, the start of this week, and obviously, we have, uh, you know, the RFPs. I've, I've worked, uh, I've, I've spoke to both Chief Lavoy and Chief Millet on, on, you know, getting their thoughts and their, their feedback on, on, on the RFP process for the feasibility study. I'm still working on that. Still working on that. Um, and, um, you know, just keeping up to date with, with budgetary matters that are gonna be coming down the pike in terms of line item transfers in our current budget. So we're, we're planning on a very seamless and smooth, uh, town meeting. I, I, I expect that there'll be some spirited debate as well on, on all of the articles. Um, so, uh, you know, I think that we'll have all the questions ready. I'll be, I'm meeting with the town accountant tomorrow. We're going over the numbers so that we'll have the analysis ready for, you know, any possible impacts on the, on the tax rate and the, and the taxes. So we'll have that ready for, uh, you know, should a question be asked at town meeting. Um, and we'll be ready for any budgetary questions that may, may, may be coming up.
Definitely, um, if the school budget were to increase, make sure you factor that in, what that would cost the taxpayers.
Sure.
Because I'm sure people would definitely be concerned about that. So. A million dollars makes the, the budget.
Oh, sure.
That rate go up. All right, anything else, sir? Chief, you had a question, sir?
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, I believe, uh, when the minutes were read, it was reported as minutes being approved for May sixth and May thirteenth instead of April.
They were.
I just read what the motion said.
I just, I just, I caught it in my head, I just didn't want you to.
So we're gonna have to redo that one. Thank you, Chief, you did catch us on that, thank you for paying attention.
I didn't want you to move on before I forgot about it.
We can't, we can't approve minutes when.
We haven't got there yet.
We haven't even been there yet.
For days that we've.
I'm glad somebody's paying attention and already. Mel, what are you doing? I usually catch us on that, these things.
Right, those are, those are two Saturday meetings that we're going to have, I guess, is that?
Yeah. So, let's go back to the minutes. Um, you're all set, sir?
All set, yeah.
All right, so rereading of the motion for the minutes.
So I'm gonna rescind my previous motion and I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April sixth and April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I was just trying to get through May.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Danny Medes, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously for April. All right. And it went right past all of us, too.
I know, I lost my detective thing that you said.
Yeah, you rushed, rushed credibility.
Up and down, up and down.
Revoked his credentials.
You're in yellow now.
Easy come, easy go, all right, I'm in the yellow.
Okay, so new business, um, anybody have any new business?
No.
Nope.
No, I have nothing. Old business?
Not my business.
No?
Nope.
No? No, I'm good. Um, correspondence. Um, we have Hummingbird Porch Pot at the Warren Senior Center for June tenth at seven P.M. Put on by the Warren Cultural Council. And we have a flyer here. Um, and that's put on our website, correct? And if anybody wants to, what, take part of it, um, they can. It's a pickup kit on the tenth. And all materials and instruction provided by Bemis Nursery. Bemis Nursery is awesome.
Where's that, Bemis Nursery?
Um, pretty weird, I've been there a few times. It's actually really nice. And they hold a lot of these things, like design things for like kids or adults and stuff. You can put these flower arrangements together and, you know, do all kinds of things. It's actually really cool. They have a lot there, too, so. If you get a chance, go to Bemis Nursery. All right? So that is our correspondence. Did we have anything else?
I did get, okay, so I got maybe, well, anybody who got cable may have got this. And the guy from.
Are they raising rates again?
No, no, it's an actual, um, you can get a discount if you're on like food stamps or you're a senior or something like that. And I meant to bring the email and I didn't.
That's already on our website.
It's on the website, okay, good. So probably everybody who has ServiceNow got it, but I just thought it would be good to mention.
This is just for Comcast, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, um, you know, a guy from Whip City mentioned it. It's like there's a specific program like ACP or something like that that people can get discounts.
Okay.
On their service, like thirty dollars off or something.
That helps.
Yeah.
Thirty dollars a month adds up real quick.
It does, so it's on the website, so check it out.
Thank you, very good.
Thank you.
Did you have anything?
It's three hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Yeah?
Good to say.
That's one trip to Walmart. The grocery shop. All right. Anybody else have any correspondence? Okay. Um, comments and concerns? Do you have any comments and concerns, sir?
Show up at the meeting, that's it.
Do you have any comments and concerns, sir?
Yes, comments.
Go ahead.
Rich, can you let me, um?
Yeah, I was gonna say Derek Feliz disconnected. Okay.
Else have any correspondence? Okay. Um, comments and concerns? Do you have any comments and concerns, sir?
Show up at the meeting, that's it.
Do you have any comments and concerns, sir?
Yes, comments.
Go ahead.
Rich, can you let me, um?
Yeah, I was gonna say Derek Feliz disconnected. Okay.
So, I wanna, I wanna show you guys something I did. And before I keep working on it, I want you, what, what you think about? Remember, we were looking for a software for, um, the building? And at some point, um, the building commissioner and planning board kind of like got left out because of the one. So to help the building department, I made this. Okay. So what I did is I, I started with, uh, what kind of like looks like the application for electrical. A very common form that we have here in town. And what I end up doing is I made this application online. So you can go on your computer, you can go on your phone and start typing everything down here. You know? Warren, get the date, today's date, whatever that you want, location, number. So you just fill in all that. And then you end up with a form like this. In this form, the secretary of the, uh, building commissioner gets the form. So people can, you know, go online and they don't, we're trying, where we're skipping, we're, this is not like, you know, big chunk of the software. But it's just one step to minimize one save on paper, one provide the users that they can apply online and they don't have to come pick the, the hard copy, fill it up, fit it back in and give it. It's just do it online.
How does it look on the phone? Can people do it on their phone pretty well?
Yeah, very easy.
Okay, so it scales.
Could they digitally sign it?
Yes, like, exactly. I read the mouth, I'm not very.
It almost looks like Rich's signature.
Too many lines.
There's a little too much there, though.
Basically, you know, um, I, I did this previously, you know, in town, but I, I did fill in all this through that. And, uh, let me see if I can pull it quickly here. So it's that same link, that email that I have. And as the form starts filling, you got all the questions.
Okay.
So they just click on the link on the website and get it?
You can have that on the website and this will pop in and you know the questions. So what it does, the software, what it does is whatever you fill in here on that field, it's basically going to put it on the correct field, on the
Application.
official application. So it's a very useful tool because, you know, all the contractors, they don't have to come over here. They can do it from home or from work, fill it up, the secretary here gets the copy and then she just, you know, she may print it or, you know, send it to others via email. You know, like, just kind of process, it's just, it's just like a big shortcut of doing something digital, online. And basically, we're saving a lot of paper as well.
So can they go back and edit this?
Yes.
And do they get some sort of confirmation that
They get a copy of it.
It was received or whatever, right?
They get a copy.
Okay.
They, when, when they submit, let's go to the form.
So like, do they get a number or something that they can?
Yeah.
Like a?
When, when they hit submit, you know, we'll, at the same time, it, it's kind of like redundant. It takes it to the clouds and put it on the software so she can go back in time and access. But at the same time, we're getting an email with a copy and he's downloading, he gets a download copy for himself that he can actually put in an email and send it again.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
So I did the exercise with Jill, we talked about the form and everything. Since it was one of the most used ones, now it's there to use, but, you know, we still have more forms that they can do. And since we are not gonna be able to integrate them with the new software, I'm trying to, you know, give them a little hand to be more efficient. This, you know, save a lot.
So is it on the website now?
Not yet.
Okay.
But I can send it to you.
And it's the exact form?
Is the exact form, the official form, so here's the empty one.
Yeah.
And this is, you go on the corridor, you pick one of these. Okay, and then after they go through the filling, it just looks like this. We don't have any internet. Now, there's some little glitches, like the signature gets so small over here.
Oh, it is really small.
But that's because the, the, the way the, the form is designed.
But it's timestamped, too.
Yeah, it's timestamped.
And. That's actually pretty good.
We actually can make up, this is a generic form that, uh, our building commissioner uses because that's the most standard one. But we can come up with our own because there's a lot of things here that we don't ask. So, uh, my plan is if we go forward, I wanna teach Jill how to do these forms and then just get everything digital. So they have, we have the option to offer contractors that they don't have to come here. They can just go on, on the website and fill all these applications. We have electric, we have plumbing, we have, uh, building permit.
Well, that would be kind of cool if you could
Yeah.
based on this, issue a building permit electronically.
Yeah, it, it's, it's the same, it's just a little bit longer.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Because then they could, instead of coming here, they could print it, print it out. Now, what about, so payment would be another thing, maybe that's something for the.
At the bottom here, they, when they, they submit this, BJ, the building, um, commissioner looks at it and then they, she puts the fee, so they still have to come back for the fee.
Yeah.
So she has to, you know, when, when she receives this, she revises it and somehow makes her calculations and come up with a fee. If we already have a, a fee for a rental of a trick, let's say it's a hundred bucks, we just put there the fee and they, you know, that's another story, you know. I know Don has tried, has tried to get payments through the, what we have already, but there's other ways to, you know, to get payments from, you know, from electronically, too, um, moving forward. But I think this allows, um, building department, electric and, you know, even maybe other places, other offices to offer electronic service.
Okay. Yeah, awesome, looks good.
So I'll continue working with this and I'll, I'll start, uh, teaching Jill and anybody who wants to, you know, basically, you can do all the forms like this.
Yeah.
Anything to make the job easier and make it more digital for, for contractors to be able to submit it? As long as we're getting everything done.
Everything, oh, they can, they can even
And I would just.
come over here and, um, we can add here button to upload the insurance.
And I would just.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
One thing I would clarify is because it is a legal document, um, I would just make sure that the digital signature is legal to use. Because we don't want to have them say, sign digitally and then not be the person or whatever. So we just want to make sure that digital thing is unique to them.
Yeah, we can even do, go a couple of steps backwards and they'll take the signature out and they will have to print it and sign it, but that, that just takes the whole purpose out.
But we just want to.
I'll go on the phone, fill it up and send it, boom, I'm done.
Again, I just want to make sure that it's legal. Because if something happens and we can't hold them legally responsible and we approve the permit or whatever, and there was no legal signature there, um, we can get ourselves in trouble. So if we can just clarify.
I think, is that a state form there?
Yes.
Yeah, so those state forms are, are issued by the state, so, you know, I, I don't know if they require a wet signature on those.
The good thing is it's an actual signature. I've done DocuSign where you just type your name in and it puts it in a fancy script font. I mean, that's a little, this is actually, you gotta write it on the screen, so it's probably better. I would just say if, if you could make it bigger, that would help.
I think we can make it bigger, but.
Even if it overwrites some of the, or, you know, covers up, um, some of the other stuff.
But to David's point, um, I, I don't know if, if the state would require a wet signature on their form, if they're okay with, you know, this format.
Yeah.
Even though it's timestamped and everything, you know, sometimes they get, the state is behind on some of these things.
Yeah.
So let, let's do the exercise, let's use this for example and send it to legal and say, hey.
Or maybe BJ's would know.
BJ, yeah, BJ too, she would, because, you know, um, she would know if they do something similar in other places. I mean, we can actually come with our own forms. He, Jill said she, that BJ chose that one because that's a common one. But the questions in this form are really, you know, very broad and multiple choice and make the form so big. But for the normal, you know, the common contractor that is building a house and comes for a permit, it's very little. So at the end, we can come up with our own forms and just say, this is what we need and just ask that. Because if you look at this form, there's, um, some questions that, you know, number of water heaters, water heaters kilowatts, heating appliances, heating, you know, municipal donation. Talks about a swimming pool also, somewhere over there, you know.
People have swimming pools.
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm saying is it is so general when the most common thing is a, somebody who's building a house and, you know, doing an addition for a new house and they just want to have their electric in, um, permit. But, you know.
Very good, well, it looks good, it's good. Off to a good start.
We're trying, we're trying, I just don't want to leave behind those apartments.
No, you gotta do something. Very good, thank you. Um, any other comments or concerns?
That was it.
Did you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Trump? Okay, anybody from the audience? Okay, Mr. Conrad, you had your hand up first.
So Conrad. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to vote and congratulate my opponent, David.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for running, you know. I hope we work together in the future still. We've had a good working relationship up to now and I hope it continues on.
Well, since we both know that common sense is not common, I'd like to say that I will be the elder voice of reason, probably one or two times in the coming year.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Beverly Salt is warrant taxpayer. What's the update?
What's the update on the disposable disposition of the safe that's out in the hallway?
We were just talking about that, too. Will, you think you have a purchaser of it? Are they backed out? So we're looking at either trying to get somebody to purchase it as a safe or sell it as scrap metal?
Well, you have to look at the bylaws because that would be a violation of the bylaw.
Okay.
The bylaw states that you have to either put it up for auction or put it up for bid.
Okay. We can do it.
Well, I was speaking with Jerry about doing an online, something, I got to get him pictures of it.
There's a site from Minnesota, towns that, an auction site.
Officer Bouchard is, has the auction site, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it'd be nice to get it out of there.
So what bylaw? It's the town bylaws?
Yeah, Article, bylaw, Article 10, under miscellaneous, section five.
Five?
I have a copy.
Is it going to be declared surplus property too?
It says, you know, any unused town property.
So I guess the question is what if nobody bids on it or buys it in auction? Which is sort of where we're at right now. Then what?
Well, you haven't put it up for bid.
I know, but I'm just saying, if that happens, you know, what's the recourse then?
What does the bylaw say?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't say anything.
Well, maybe it should say something.
Well, that's a good point.
Well, you figure if you, even if you put it out to auction, somebody will bite on it for auction.
For scrap.
Yeah, even just for the scrap, especially if you list it as, what is it, 550 pounds of solid steel. You know, some scrapper will sit there like, I'll put a hundred bucks on that and then turn around and sell it for whatever its going rate is. You know? It's probably going to go at auction, you know?
Yeah, I would hope so.
Well, thank you, Beth. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
I was disappointed that the school did not have their annual report at the polls at a reasonable time. And thanks to Karen who printed out, you know, the annual report. I mean, this has happened every single year that I can remember. It's always last minute and, you know, everybody's scrambling to get them to West Warren.
I would recommend you to go to school meetings because, um...
I mean...
We understand. And we ask for a lot of stuff, too, and basic stuff, we never get it. It's almost like the cooperation really isn't there.
But it's our money that, our taxpayer.
Absolutely agree.
And they thought, you know, Karen brought us something because I was in West Warren and we had nothing. And that's the way it usually is. It's like nine o'clock, they maybe drop them off. I mean, they know that they, we need them. They should be there the day before.
Well, actually, Jim and I talked about it. We're going to ask them if they will put it in our main book because then that way it has to be to me by March so we can have it.
Then the other thing that happened is they said, they brought us some and they said pages were missing, so they only got a small, you know, bunch of pages. It was all missed out.
So, yeah, pages missing out of it, too?
Yeah, odd pages or?
They copied, the same thing happened downstairs here. The school brought them over. Jerry noticed that, Chief Muller noticed that the school only copied the even side, not the odd side.
Yeah, something like that.
So you didn't have the full report?
Didn't have the full report.
Did we end up getting the full report?
I have it in an email and I printed off several and brought them to, I brought 10 to senior center and 15 downstairs. So those were correct, but the ones that they brought us were not.
Yes.
Bev, please show up at the meeting. Again, you know, you see what, we try to work with the schools and we try to, it's We all want, we all have kids in the schools. We want to do good. We want to help the schools the best we can. It just, it's difficult. It's a lot more difficult than it should be. There should be cooperation.
They're doing the yellow, too?
The yellow? We're being generous.
Well, we went to three budget meetings and like?
And how much did you get out of those meetings?
There was nothing accomplished. I mean, the last one, there was no quorum.
No, and we really didn't talk about the budget other than, no, we can't cut back. We can't make cuts.
So there was no, no like?
There was no back and forth.
About how we can move forward together. It was just?
No, we're not cutting anything. Oh, by the way, we got eight jobs you want us, that we want to hire.
Yeah.
You know? Yes, Jim?
And just think, these are the people that are teaching our children.
That's what I see.
Oh, well.
Well, the teachers are, you know?
So?
Yeah, there's the admin and then there's the teachers.
The teachers are amazing, okay? Our actual teachers are great. I love them, you know? They do the best they can, you know?
The administration leaves a lot to be desired.
Again, I just wish there was more cooperation because a lot of these things could be worked out with talking with each other and not butting heads and fighting and saying, you're not going to tell me what to do. When overall, we're responsible for the budget. Overall, the town votes for that budget and has to pay the consequences for it. So when you vote for, to give the school an extra million dollars, the taxpayers have to pay for that. So nothing is free in the world and we, um, basically gave opportunity. We went to their meetings, their finance meetings, and we tried working with them. And after those meetings that we've gone to, I can honestly say, we've achieved nothing. There was no cooperation. There was, we don't have, we don't have it ready. We don't have our numbers yet.
Yeah.
Then at the end, we don't even have a quorum, so we can't have a meeting. Okay? And then the final thing is, that's our budget, we're not changing it. Okay? And, oh, here's a list of eight jobs we want to hire for the town, for the school. Okay, that, not helping here. We're not going in the right direction here. We already told you the town can't afford it, but that was not listened to. So we took action to where we thought was appropriate and we worked with FinCom. We had a meeting about this. We all came up with a number because the number that was being presented to us is not realistic. And it goes up every year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
How much do the town actually give the school, not above any?
I don't have those numbers. We gave their budget, their regular operating budget, and then approximately 3% above that, which is $110,000 above that. So that was 110, and that was across the board for all departments averaged about a 3% increase.
So we give them, the minimum local contribution for 24 was about $3 million.
And transportation?
So transportation is about, call it 900. And then, and this one that I have, which is for March, they wanted 1.2 million above all that.
So right now, the town gives about $3 million to the school to operate. And now we're going to vote for above to give them more to the school.
Yeah.
Which is, they're asking for 1.6 between two schools, two towns?
No, well, 1.2 for March.
From 1.7 to 1.2 to, is it back up again?
Two million, if you do both.
You do both towns, 2 million.
And do you know, do we know how much West Profil pays, gives to the school, not above, but?
Three and a half million.
So that's like, they do, they have like a budget of almost $7 million to work with?
Well, that's from us, but they also get money from the state.
7 million and then like 1.5 million in transportation. So that's what, sort of what's, I guess, the baseline?
Because before, you know, my time and everything, when I was young, you know, new in town, every time there was a discussion about the school, I thought we were talking about that money that, you know, the school deserves and we're actually talking about that?
Above, what they usually, yes.
The town, the residents give to the school because they already have like a certain $18 million from the town.
And the thing about the local contribution that we're supposed to give, that we have to give, I mean, those numbers are recommended by the state.
Those are mandatory.
Right, so the state of Massachusetts is saying, this is what you need to run this district. So now why do we need over $2 million extra to run the district? Wouldn't Massachusetts add that money in?
So my stance with that is if they're actually going to ask this from the town residents, they should stand in front of the town residents and justify that amount.
And go through all the figures.
And go through it and say, this is why. Boom, this is what this costs, this is what this costs, this is what this costs. And if any of those can be eliminated, saying, okay, I'm going to spend a million dollars on part B. Okay, do we need part B?
Yeah.
Well, no, it's a good thing to have. Well, maybe we want to cut part B out today because if it's just a good thing to have, but it's not actually accomplishing your mission, which is to teach the children, then why are we paying for that? And transparency, transparency has to be key. In the future, I would tell the schools, be very transparent, where money's going, tell us exactly what you're spending it on and how much, who's making what, and go for there. Instead of just giving line items on numbers and saying, if this is line item so-and-so, okay, I'm not an accountant. I want to see what department, where that's going. What's the purpose? And I think the school should be held to, wherever they allocate that money, that's where that money stays. Unfortunately, when we give them money and we give them $2 million for an account, they can take that $2 million and put it somewhere else.
And they do.
And they do.
Well, and we did get a lot of numbers from them early on, but then, you know, going through, and you know I've done this, like, if you look at the percentage increase on a lot of like just the salary.
30% increase on your salary?
35, 39, 25%, 23%, 42%, 35%.
42% increase on salary?
Salary, yeah, I mean, that's what, you know?
How would you like the job, get 42% increase?
It's a good raise.
Yeah, and personally, don't take me wrong, I support the schools and everything, but as personally, because I have my family and I do this, we're talking about everybody in the town. So it is not a personal thing, it's just a, you know?
No, it's what's best for the town and community. Again, teachers are awesome. We wish them the best. We know they deserve more money, but it's not blanket across the board. It wasn't like a 10% increase in teacher salary. It was one person's getting 42% increase. That's, you know, a little out there for me. All right? So we answer your question, above and beyond? And I really hope you show up at the annual in the special because we need some level heads. And feel free, when the budget's being discussed, especially about the school, to express what you need to say. And we will have numbers in case of what it would be at a million dollars, what it would be at 1.7 million dollars, what was originally asked for, how much of your taxes going up at that point?
Well, given my stupid equation, you know, you take that million dollars and divide it in the amount of homeowners in town, it's like $700 each. So, you know, I'll put the $700, but what about everybody else?
Well, people on fixed incomes.
Yeah.
That's where I'm concerned, so.
All right, David?
Yes, sir.
Just to let you know that I actually went through the town census and there's more than 940 people in this town over the age of 65 that wasn't a foot in this bill.
This is shared expense. Everybody pays for it.
Well, we're also low to moderate income in our, you know, for a town. That's why we get a lot of grants, but?
When you get somebody living off of the $35,000 a year and you say, okay, we're going to take another $700 a year out of you for taxes, and I understand you're only making $35,000 a year, that's significant.
Yeah.
All right, so we spent way too much time on that right now.
Yeah, save it for town meeting, right?
Save it for town meeting because I can guarantee there's going to be people fired up on that meeting. So any more comments and concerns? Anybody on Zoom? Any comments and concerns on Zoom?
Nope.
Nope, all right. Next meeting is May 11th and we'll be having our 5:30 PM executive session. And then May 18th at 6 PM, we have a meeting. Then, of course, everybody make sure you show up for the annual town meeting, please, in the special town meeting. Your favorite?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Richard Hacker, aye.
Lady Phinney's, aye.
David DuFrey, aye. We are adjourned.